Infer, there we go.
All right, and I'm showing us is live on YouTube. You may begin whenever you're ready.
All right, great. Thank you, guys, for being here again. Just always good to see you guys. All right, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is April 20th, 2021, and this is a study session. Can we please start with the roll call?
We get there?
And, and yeah, we're all here for, I don't know why we do the roll call when we can all see each other. But can we just take note, Eugene, that we're all here? Do we have to do a roll call every week?
Guys are all on screen. I reviewed some prior meetings and, you know, it's Hollywood Squares.
Right, right. And I'm just saying that at some point in the past, there was roll call, right? But now it's like, all right, so let, 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 let the chair state that everyone is here on city council. Can we start the pledge now? Joan, do you want to do the pledge for us?
Sure.
Great.
I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, great. Thank you, Councilmember Peck. All right, anyone wishing to provide public comment during Public Invited to be Heard, please watch the livestream and then call in once we open the meeting for comments. That's the number. Watch for the instructions. It'll be displayed again, and then we'll open it for public comment, and we'll call based on the last three numbers of your phone call. You'll have three minutes, and then at the end of three minutes, no matter how much we love or hate what you're saying, we'll cut you off. Okay, do we have any motions to direct the city manager to add agenda items to future agendas? All right, cool. Seeing none, let's go ahead and
Hey, Mayor.
Yep.
Staff, can you check the broadcast? I got an email that it's not showing up. We can take a quick break and make sure that it's broadcasting.
Okay, it appears to be showing up on YouTube on my end. Are you seeing it as well?
I see it as well on the portal, so I think we're fine.
All right, good. I just got an email. It just came back. We're good. Thank you. Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Peck.
Um, I'm sorry, I, you talked faster than I can think. So yes, I do have something to say about, it's more of a question to staff. I, I was reading in our utility council communication about our water usage, and it made me think that I would like to know if staff has a presentation about our drought plans. And when I was reading the task force, the report on the Climate Action Task Force, I didn't see anything in there about a drought plan. I don't know why they didn't seem to address it. So if you're bringing that back, I won't make a motion. You're going to update us on that?
Mayor, yeah, Mayor. Councilmember Peck, we are bringing that back in May, and we'll have a full discussion and share with you the drought response plan.
Thank you.
All right, great. Councilmember Martin, did you have anything else to add?
No, I was just gonna say that the Water Board just, just made their decision, and it would be back shortly. So same thing.
All right, great. So I guess the next question is, we've got special, we got Public Invited to be Heard next. I'm wondering if we can't go ahead and open up Public Invited to be Heard. Now, let's put up the screen and then handle the special reports and presentations while people call in. Would that be okay?
You can't, the screen won't be up with the number?
Mm-hmm.
Why can't we done it? We did it last week. We doubled up. Can we put up the number where we they got slides? Okay, well, let's go ahead then. Why don't we go ahead and do special reports and presentations now? And then we'll do Public Invited to be Heard only because we don't need a break yet. So let's do that. So COVID-19 update?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, as, as we move into these, the next stages, we're in level blue now with Boulder County. I've asked, so we have Lexi Nolan, who is the interim Public Health Director, Chris Urbina, who is the medical, what's his title, Chris? Campbell?
He's our medical director.
Medical Director, and then Chris Campbell. And I've asked Chris to do a brief presentation on where we are in terms of vaccine status, and then Carmen will jump in with a couple of slides to talk about some information that we want to use to get out in the community. So Chris and Lexi are here to answer any questions. If you, Chris, Dr. Chris Urbina is here to answer, and Lexi, specific questions. Chris Campbell is going to give a brief overview of where we are on the vaccination piece. And then Carmen will jump in. Chris, Campbell?
Thank you. Just wait for my presentation to come up. Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Campbell with Boulder County Public Health. I'm the emergency manager and leading our vaccination campaign, and wanted to share some updates since we met with you last month. I appreciate the opportunity. We're really going to focus on health equity and vaccine equity and provide some updates there. I did want to provide some overall data on where we're at with the vaccination campaign in the community. So we'll, we'll start there. Next slide, please. Great, great, great progress we made thus far and good things to celebrate. So we vaccinated with at least one dose in our community, over 160,000 community members. This is 60% of the adult population that's eligible for vaccines, so very good progress. Relative to the rest of the state of Colorado with that first dose, we've made really good progress. So that's close to around 41%. Next slide, please. Just wanted to share some of the, the data by age group, and one reason why this is important is this has really impacted the, really the big impacts of disease on community members, hospitalizations, illness and death. And so we really make good progress with older community members, and you'll see some of the, some of the data here. 70-plus community members are over 90%, you know, 60, 69, those community members were upwards of 80%. So really good progress, and we wanted to frame that and share that with you tonight. Next slide, please. One other, one important component, we wanted to ensure that we have the capacity in the county to, to deliver a good amount of vaccine, and you might have heard us in the past talk about a goal of 20, 25, 30,000 vaccines per week that we'd be able to administer in the county, and we are meeting those goals. So as of, as of last week, we were around 26, almost 27,000 vaccines administered in the county, and that's been consistent. So good progress there. Next slide, please. Another important component to share with council and community members, we, we are projecting towards when we'll have that first dose of vaccine of the, in, in 70% or more of, of the community. And that's, it's going to be right around mid-May that we're projecting, which is great progress, even closer to 80%. Again, this is really important as we're moving towards, you know, different, different stages of masking and in the dial, we feel like we've made good progress and are staying on target with our vaccination campaign. Next slide, please. Just a quick slide to show how we're doing relative to the rest of the state. Really good progress, both Brimfield County and Boulder County really remain leaders in the state in terms of uptake, and it really does speak to community making that good, important decision to get vaccinated. Next slide, please. We know we have work to do. This slide's a little dated, and this is what we really want to dig in with you all just briefly is working with our BIPOC community members, and we have some work to do. This is, we've made progress since this slide, but we know that there's areas where we can improve and really work on barriers to access for community members. Next slide, please. This, this slide just shows again where, you know, we do have areas that we're focusing on with our equity strategies. What we do want to get in this slide, we don't have it in here, is showing where some of our equity sites are located. They're definitely located, and we shared this in the past with you all. Near some areas where we have lower uptake for vaccines. So that does continue to inform our strategies from an equity perspective. Next slide, please. This will be familiar. I showed this last month. Just reminder of the types of clinics we have, that, that traditional provider, those traditional clinics and hospitals and, and other areas in the community continue to do incredible work. We are really now pivoting and really focusing on equity with longer-standing clinics, which we'll discuss just briefly, and also some of the progress with smaller mobile clinics. Next slide, please. You've also seen this slide. I really want to take them on to dig into this just briefly. So education and having that good, informed decision to get vaccinated is the, the real area we need to continue to focus on. We're making good progress. We've worked with our communications teams to provide one-pagers and, and toolkits and in several languages, and that's, we're now disseminating that out throughout the community. We've had, and I've talked about this in the past, a vaccine equity coordinating committee that's really given us that grassroots community information we needed to make our vaccines, vaccine clinics culturally appropriate and welcoming. They've also helped us identify sites where we've located equity clinics. The next big step, and we're making good progress on this, and now Carmen will speak to this a bit, is working with community cultural brokers or community influencers. That group is helping us both provide information about getting vaccinated, answering questions, going door-to-door, helping folks sign up for appointments. So that is really what we're digging into and making good progress with that broad coalition of community members. Next slide, please. Just briefly on the education side, I want to share this with, with council and community members. CDPHE did a, did a survey just prior to the vaccines, getting that emergency use authorization and getting approved. They did a follow-up survey and asking Coloradoans, community members, if they're willing to get vaccinated, and we've seen significant increases in that, which is great to see. We still have some work to do here, and we, we know that community members are making that good decision to get vaccinated. We're going to keep providing information so they, they can work through that. Next slide, please. We, we've talked about this. We've held several town halls, and I would, would just a couple points here. We, if, if there are community members, organizations that would like a town hall or like to hold a town hall with us, we, we do have information on our website to, to request those. But we're making good progress here, and Dr. Sheila Davis, our health equity coordinator, continues to support that along with Lizbeth Mendoza, and provides these, cultural broker with us, provides these, these opportunities in Spanish. Next slide, please. Just some updates on locations in our longer-standing community clinics. So Lasty Station is incredible partnership with, with city, the city of Longmont and Boulder County Public Health and Salud Family Health is a federal co-op at Health Center. Very focused on equity. These clinics are running two times a week, and really, we're, we're working with both community ambassadors and cultural brokers in the community, ensure that folks have access to these clinics. Couple other clinics, most importantly, Boulder County Fairgrounds, these are larger clinics that we're holding, that we've worked really hard to make welcoming and, and really appropriate for community members. These are now completely equity-focused. We've worked really hard to, with that community ambassador group, cultural brokers, to, to, for community members to access vaccine here. Next slide, please. Updated you on a few areas here last month. I will touch on, we continue that partnership with Hope Like Clinic, area agency on AG, Meals on Wheels, to continue to vaccinate homebound individuals. Very important, and, you know, if there are community members listening that would like to, that if, that find themselves in this scenario, we would ask them to give our call center a call. We'll, we'll work on getting them vaccine through, through Hope Like Clinic. I also mentioned unhoused community members. So we, clinics are being held in the shelters in Longmont in the next two weeks. So we're excited about that. That was a bit impacted by the, the Yance and Johnson-Johnson vaccine being, being, being paused, but we are shifting and using Moderna vaccine. And we're excited to continue that, that work with partners in the community. Next slide, please. And we continue to, just continue to explore those known gap areas. We know that weekend and after hours can be challenging, and so we are, we're looking at our clinic hours and also looking at mobile clinics to, to, to support that. You might have heard also that CDPHE in the governor's office, they're holding clinics. Definitely a great equity effort we support, so those might be some other clinics that are available to, to the community, and, you know, that's something that's being coordinated directly through the governor's office. Next slide, please. And this is our clinic we did at Timberline School. Harold was there as well and is incredibly supportive. You know, this is really what an equity clinic looks like. It's welcoming. It's not in your kind of traditional setting. And we had incredible, we're doing our second dose clinics last weekend, this weekend for this clinic, and it was really successful. And I think I'll turn it over to Carmen if she has some slides to share.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Carmen Darmida's Community and Neighborhood Resources, and I think, Steph, there's a couple of slides that I have just to talk about the call to action. You can go to the next slide. So what we've done is we've issued a call to action for cultural brokers and allies. We're inviting community partners, cultural brokers to really help us get the word out, share information on the vaccine, how to access it, and registration assistance. So we're working on that, and I will tell you that based on emails and phone calls today, we have ignited the influencers' network. So they're calling. And we're simply asking that when folks are interacting within their work, say the R Center or even our own call center for the city of Longmont, that they should inquire if the individual needs information on how to access the, the vaccine and/or assistance to register for the vaccine. Still an emphasis on priority populations and accessibility. We're giving folks talking points, toolkits, and flyers. Tomorrow evening, we have a capicito for cultural brokers, where again, we'll be recruiting and doing orientation. We'll have on the 28th of follow-up. We've, last week, we did with our community partners, and I think we had probably about 350 folks attend from different organizations. You can go to the next slide. And so this is the flyers and toolkit that we have. We have a toolkit in Spanish. We have flyers in Spanish and English. And we also have toolkits for LGBTQ. We'll be working on a toolkit for youth when we get to that phase. You can go to the next slide, please. So we're working with the trusted cultural brokers that are within nonprofits or community leaders, key points of connections to help people in our priority populations connect. Our community ambassadors are Centro Amistad, Comité de Longmont, Outholders, Center for People with Disabilities, Peak to Peak, El Paso Movement, and then through Boulder County SUMA, a community and agency partners. Those are the influencers, the ones that are helping. And we're asking tonight that you also help us in getting the word out. I can send some flyers over. But it might be as, as simple as asking those that you know within your family, your neighborhoods, different associations that you're with. I'll tell you, for instance, I know a production manager at a plastic injection company here in town has about 60 employees. I said, can I give you flyers? Do, do your employees need help? Quite a few of them are Spanish-speaking. Do they need help with assistance? Here's who can assist them. So that's really what we're asking from council, and we've already asked city staff to help us with that. And city staff is helping get the word out every time they have contact with individuals. And I think that's my last slide. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, so we have, obviously, the team we introduced earlier on here. If you all have any questions for us, I did want to let you know that when we said there's going to be the request and the call to action, this was the information that Carmen shared that we will send to you all. Some of you all have asked us this questions, and how do we connect people to the vaccine spots? And so we will send it out, but we wanted her to briefly go over that. Just so you know, as an organization, what we're doing as a city is anytime we engage someone from the, the community, and we're in a situation, we're just asking a simple question. Do you want to get vaccinated? And if they say yes, then we're using those tools that Carmen will provide us, where you can scan it. And then depending on someone's access to internet technology, if we have the time, we will assist them in getting registered, and if we don't have the time, we will have them call the number into the county so they can get registered. It's a, I will tell you, it's a, it's a, it's a heavy lift that everybody's been working on, and we know that we're going to be in this through May as we continue to, the narrower the margins get, the more work we have to do to ensure that we can get everyone vaccinated. So I wanted to just give you that update. We're here to answer any questions.
I would just suggest, Harold, if you could please post it on the city Facebook page, and then put our names in, tag us. That'll get us, that'll, that'll, just, just do that. I think that'll be of help. But thank you very much. Great, great presentation. And I am happy to see that we continue to get nearer to the end of the tunnel known as COVID. So I got my vaccine yesterday, my first shot, and today I feel worse than when I actually had COVID. And, but I'm just doing my part, doing my part. So thank you, everybody, for doing that. Let's go ahead and take a break while we wait for Public Invited to be Heard. Do we have anybody who's called, called back? Let's just take a break. We'll be back in, in three, and then we will leave it open for a couple of callers to make sure everybody gets on, has the chance. So we'll be right back.
Lexi, Chris. Chris, thanks for joining. I think you're good. You are good. Thank you.
For folks watching the livestream at home, this is your opportunity to call in right now for the public invited to be heard. Please go ahead and just follow the instructions that you see on your screen, dialing the toll-free number of 1-888-788-0099. When prompted, enter the meeting ID 89972597009. And when prompted for a participant ID, press pound. Please remember that you should mute the livestream when you call in so that you're not getting a delay in the background. And once you call into the meeting, we will let you into the meeting, and you will hear our instructions, and we will call on you by the last three digits of your phone number. Ask you to unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record, and at that time, you will have three minutes.
All right. How many people do we have in the queue so far?
We have five people so far, Mayor.
Well, then let's keep it open and get everybody back, and then go ahead with first call Public Invited to be Heard.
All right, Mayor, it looks like everyone's back. Is that correct?
All right, let's open it up then.
Okay, do you want me to go ahead and keep this slide up or?
No, let, let's, let's take this, actually, let's keep the slide up through the first caller, and then we'll, we'll close it. Okay?
Perfect. All right, caller with a number ending in 470. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. Please state your name and your address for the record, and you will have three minutes.
Okay, are we go?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Excellent. Michael Bellman here at 841 Tennesse City Drive. First, I want to express my gratitude for your, for your, you council members stalwart support for sustainability in recent years. From strongly influencing PRPA to adopt the goal of becoming 100% fossil fuel-free by 2030, unanimously passing a climate crisis resolution and investing in air monitoring, to name just a few. Next, I'd like to address the four points that staff has given you to discourage support for SB 200. Staff, there is a lack of clarity regarding the treatment of non-carbon hydro resources if they relate to renewable energy credits in the state's definition of renewable energy. Me, this is precisely the kind of thing that gets hammered out as the bill moves through the process. The social justice piece of the bill will protect any communities with a significant underserved population that relies more heavily on hydropower, and we will not be significantly impacted since only 10% of our energy is currently derived from hydro. Staff, the potential for penalties if results do not meet clean energy plan targets, especially when those targets already exceed minimum requirements. This approach has the potential to penalize communities that are already taking aggressive action on climate change and in position of carbon fees would make, take money out of communities without clear explanation of where that money will go and who will determine how it gets spent. Me, communities like ours, whose targets exceed the greenhouse gas reductions required in this bill, will certainly not be penalized for meeting those targets unless they grossly renege on their own commitments. As for the proposed APN fees, I personally investigated this and learned from a Sierra Club attorney whose team thoroughly studied it that because of caps built into the bill, any rate increase will be something on the order of seven one-hundredths of 1%, truly negligible. Staff, the immediate application of carbon emission fees would, would drive an approximate 50% rate increase for our communities. Me, this appears to be significantly off, given the information I just provided. Not to suggest that staff is trying to be misleading, but it's quite possible they relied on numbers from a third party that is either grossly misstating the impact or misinterpreted the bill arriving at an erroneous number. Staff, this bill hinders the ability of home-rule cities and municipal electricity to best determine how to meet climate action goals within the needs and context of their own communities. Me, we are and would continue to lead the way in cutting-edge climate goals with our plan for 100% renewables by 2030. Thus, this bill would virtually have no impact on our plans moving forward. Much like if we were a car manufacturer making cars that were already 25% more efficient than a new EPA emissions regulation required. So please remain faithful to your stellar admirable tradition of supporting environmentally sustainable efforts by endorsing SB 200. Thanks so much for listening.
All right, thank you. Next caller? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Caller with the number ending in 722. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. You could please state your name and your address for the record. You have three minutes, and you may begin. You could please state your name and your address for the record. You have three minutes and you may begin. Caller with the number ending in seven two two. I'm going to try to ask you to unmute yourself again. If you could please. Follow the instructions on your phone and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is.
Can you hear me? Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, I am asking you to support Senate Bill twenty one two hundred. Um, I'm just gonna, I gotta turn off my TV here.
Um.
Just a second. Anyway, um, I just went to the, um. I went to the, I test, I, I, I went to testify at the state senate transportation and energy committee hearing today. To hear testimony and I'm even more convinced that this bill is very essential. Uh, it's going to give us more tools to regulate emissions and it's specific by sectors and it's equitable and it's inclusive. Longmont is our, the home. To the worst emissions from oil and gas production in the nation. The leakage of methane, ethane, benzene and other toxic chemicals from these oil wells are known carcinogens that put our health. And the health of our most vulnerable population at risk. It's clear that the local oil and gas companies are not following the existing regulations that are not being adequately monitored for leaks and infractions. Longmont has made some good climate goals, but we're not on track to meet these goals. Senate Bill twenty one two hundred will make sure that we meet our commitments to Coloradoans and to Longmont residents. Our local power cooperative, the Platte Power River Authority. The RPA opposes this bill and is claiming that the air pollutant emissions notice or APN fees. Will increase by fifty percent. This is wildly wrong and it's a complete misrepresentation of the facts. The truth is that these fees will increase by about point zero six nine percent. Also opponents argue that the carbon fee will cause utility bills to increase substantially. Again, this is not true. The carbon fee is a very modest fee that's already assessed on conventional pollutants like sulfur dioxide. Nitric oxide and particulate matter. There's no reason to think that expanding current fees to cover the GHD gas, the gas, um. Gas pollution would cause any budgetary problems to carbon emitting facilities. The PRPA is planning to build a costly reciprocating internal combustion engine or rice plant. Which will operate using natural gas. This will not reduce emissions and is not in line with the city or the state's climate goals. So PRPA could more wisely finance the increased production of renewable energy. But it's unlikely that it will unless they're monitored and regulated. The time is to act is now and we cannot wait for a better time. So thank you for supporting this bill.
All right, thank you. Next caller.
Caller with the number ending in zero six five. Going to ask you to unmute yourself. If you could please state your name and your address for the record and you have three minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah. Hi, good evening, council members. Mr. Mayor, it's Abby Driscoll. I, uh, live at thirteen oh four Lupine Court here in Longmont. And I'm calling tonight Chair of the Board of Sustainable Resilient Longmont. And I'm speaking today to urge Longmont City Council to vote against the staff's recommendation to oppose Senate Bill twenty one two hundred. This is an important piece of legislation that will help further Colorado's transition to clean energy. And support the need to rapidly decarbonize electric generation to avoid the most disastrous effects of climate change. And, um, I think you all know I have a seven year old son. I know many of you have met him. And, um, you know, this really hits home for me because I think that. We've seen right here in Longmont how we've had to stay indoors literally for days on end due to. Um, toxic levels of air pollution here in our local community, just as recently as last summer. Because of wildfires. And so. You know, these rising temperatures are causing catastrophic damage to our planet. Um, and we must do something to act boldly. Um, this is a sensible piece of legislation that will help, um, enforce regulations at the state level. It's, it's going to, um, set clear deadlines for the Air Quality Control Commission to adopt regulations to meet. And sector specific goals. It's going to ensure that electric providers, including our own utility. File timely and meaningful emission reductions plans. And, um, it's going to support, uh, more opportunities for community engagement and empowerment, um, in terms of, uh, climate equity. Which is a huge issue and so important to me. And, um, I guess lastly, I would just say that opponents of this bill, um, may try to argue that. Um, financial based incentives aren't needed, but, um. Can we count on America's largest polluting industries, including oil, gas and coal to self-regulate? I am here to tell you after twenty five years, uh, of environmental activism that the answer is a plain and simple no. This bill is attempting to codify and strengthen the goals the state set forward to the greenhouse gas roadmap. And at a basic level, this bill supports and furthers those goals and also supports the goals that Longmont itself. Has set forward as we move, um, towards our goal of a hundred percent renewable by twenty thirty. So that's why I urge Longmont City Council members to vote no on the staff's recommendations and support this bill. To help strengthen our ability to meet Colorado's and Longmont's climate goals and to act boldly to avert a climate crisis. Thank you.
Thanks Abby. All right, uh, last caller, right?
Uh, we actually have two more, Mayor.
Okay, that's great.
A caller with the number ending in one one nine. I'm going to go ahead and ask you to unmute yourself. If you could please state your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes.
Hi, this is Karen Dyke. I'm at seven oh eight Hayden Court. Mr. Mayor and council members, uh, tonight you will vote on whether to support Senate Bill two hundred. This bill calls for power providers such as PRPA. To decrease greenhouse gas emissions by eighty percent by twenty thirty. The requirements for municipalities such as Longmont is reducing its greenhouse gas emissions. By at least ninety five percent between twenty thirty five and twenty forty and a hundred percent by twenty forty compared to two thousand and five. This is lower levels of greenhouse gas emissions than this council has already committed to achieving. I'm saddened that the staff, city staff recommends not endorsing this bill. This bill is bold, not bold enough for some, too bold for others. That to me is usually a sign of a bill that can make it through the legislature and get the governor's signature. This bill is meant to achieve several things. First is to put the state on a better track to meet climate goals. This is imperative if we want to impact worsening climate crisis that we are now witnessing with droughts, fires and extreme weather. Second, the dirty air we breathe will be cleaner. An estimated quarter million of a people of quarter million people die each year due to air pollution. Third, an investment in clean energy economy will add jobs. As the bill is enacted, AQCC will set improved targets for meeting the climate roadmap. Our city and other cities will be required to report on their pollution and to take steps to reduce that pollution. Of course, there may be fines for failure to do so, but Longmont should already be on a path to accomplish this. And can be a leader in this effort to stave off the worst impacts of climate change by doing our part. Climate justice and equity are also addressed. A last important component of this bill has to do with the practice of AQCC. At AQCC of paying to pollute. Adding additional types of pollutants will more fully cover the harmful pollutants spewed into our air by the fossil fuel industry and others. In twenty seventeen, this council made a bold statement. This was a commitment to one hundred percent renewable energy. Many of you also committed to meeting this goal when you ran for council. Are you ready to stand up and say, let's do this? Or will you say it is too expensive and too hard? We're waiting for your answer. Thank you very much.
Thanks Karen. All right, last caller.
All right, our last caller, phone number ending in three, three, two. I'm going to ask you to unmute. Please state your name and address for the record and you will have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Mitzi Nicoletti. I live at twelve sixty one Button Rock Drive, Longmont, eight zero five oh four. And I support SB two hundred. This is a hallmark bill and is designed to address the many shortcomings in environmental and community groups have been experiencing and expressing. And the lack of progress on HB twelve sixty one. We do not have the luxury not to pass this bill. By supporting this bill, we will be adopting measures that will reduce emissions of greenhouse gases. And at the same time. Adopt protection for the disproportionality impacted communities. Currently, we're not on track to meet our climate goals. SB two hundred complements the state's current roadmap. To ensure we meet our commitment made to Colorado and to future generations to come. Setting clear deadlines for our air quality commission to adopt regulations to meet each sector. Specific goal is critical and we don't have that right now. This will help ensure sources of greenhouse gas pollution. Do their parts reduce pollution and meet the roadmap targets in upcoming AQCC rule makings. Addressing the electricity, oil and gas, transportation and building sectors. I know we're all familiar with the consequences of climate change and dirty air, both from recent wildfires and of course everyday pollution. Locally, we continue to experience the deterioration of the air we breathe daily. We must shift to reducing our overall greenhouse gases. To provide powering our houses, businesses, cars, trucks and more to clean energy from renewable sources such as solar and wind. Also by doing so, we will continue to grow our already near sixty thousand Coloradans that work in the clean energy sector. Right now, I don't feel there's a sense of urgency. Our house is on fire. What are you going to do in support to make the changes we need now to move forward? I urge you tonight to support SB two hundred. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much. That'll go ahead and conclude first call public invited to be heard. So let's go ahead and move on to the study session items. Um, Harold, why don't we start with overview of utility bills, rates and assistance programs? Pretty place.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and Council. Steph, can you bring up that presentation? I'm Becky Doyle, Assistant Director of Business Services. And we're here tonight to talk to you a little bit about our utility bills, um, uh, the rates that we charge for utilities and assistance that's been provided. During this time of pandemic. Next slide, please. So as we know, twenty twenty was a challenging year for many, um, you know, both the, through the pandemic and the economic impacts thereof. And throughout this time, Longmont's been able to continue to provide high quality, reliable utility services. And while doing so, also provide assistance to those in need within our community. Uh, this was some context that we wanted to provide to you all as we begin a review of utility rates within twenty twenty one. Next slide, please. In general, this is a, a typical residential utility bill, um, which shows all the services that we, uh, provide locally here. Uh, including our municipally owned electric utility, uh, as well as some other. Atypical services, not all, all cities are able to also provide, you know, trash removal services. And, uh, our parking greenway fee is, is an unusual appearance on, on the utility bill. In general, though, uh, a resident who uses approximately the average amount of. Electricity, water and wastewater per month would see a bill of just under two hundred dollars. Next slide, please. Compared to our northern front range neighbors, that's, uh, you know, high quality service for, for good value here. We're, we're about in the middle of, of this group. A lot of that is driven by, uh, that municipally owned electric utility which boasts the second lowest, uh. Electric rates in the state according to a recent CAMU survey. Um, and many other, you know, municipalities, as I mentioned, have that, you know, Excel energy and receive trash service through private haulers. Next slide, please. So we did see some changes in use during COVID nineteen, particularly in the electric area. We saw an increase in residential electric consumption. Uh, overall, there was a seven percent increase in, in residential usage in electric. Uh, some of which had to do with an increase in the number of accounts, but we did also see about five percent. Uh, per account increase as well as about a one percent decrease on the commercial side. In water, on the other hand, as Council member Peck alluded to earlier, because of weather conditions, we did not observe that same shift. Um, from, you know, commercially uses to residential. Uh, because there was in general greater water use for outdoor watering because of the, the lower amount of precipitation. And we'll be coming back with some additional information about our drought plan next month. Next slide, please. So we have several opportunities for assistance in all years, um, not just in twenty twenty. But, uh, the, the flagship sort of local assistance program that we offer is our Longmont Cares Program or City Assistance Rebate System. And this is, uh, a rebate of many fees and charges that are paid to the city. Including, uh, a rebate of sales tax, uh, for groceries, uh, that was established in early twenty nineteen. As well as property tax. There's a component for, for water, for electric, the parking greenway fee is rebated. And so that's provided as, as a credit on the utility bill and certainly, um, can help with, with utility burdens. Uh, in addition, federal programs for heating are available to, to those in our community. And crisis utility assistance is provided through the R Center. And residents have the ability to, uh, join a voluntary contribution program. Uh, called cope to check off on your utility bill and contribute to that crisis assistance program. Um, in addition, we, we fund electric and water efficiency programs because it's, it's important both for, from the perspective of. Uh, helping folks to control their bills as well as meeting environmental sustainability goals. So we had some great results in terms of getting folks who needed assistance into the Longmont Cares Program this year. Um, you, you can see there, we, we grew a lot from a hundred and eighty four participants in twenty nineteen to seven hundred eleven in twenty twenty. And, uh, shout out certainly to, um, to, to our, our folks in Treasury who. Were able to process all of those applications as well as, um, uh, people with Carmen and her team who helped people navigate the system to get the assistance that they needed here. Next slide, please. So another tool that we were able to bring to bear to make sure that people were accessing, uh, the, the assistance programs that, that they required. Was that as part of our, our participation in the What Works Cities program to improve the use of data and evidence within the city. We partnered with the Behavioral Insights Team. And designed an intervention to increase, uh, applications to the program. And then ran a randomized controlled trial to test whether that, uh, intervention was successful. And what, what you see here is, is just a result of that trial. It was very successful. We, we plan to continue to use that intervention. In the future, which is essentially a utility bill insert. What was interesting about doing that in this environment is that absent this particular, uh, trial. You might say, well, you know, there, there's an increase from the twenty nineteen participation to twenty twenty. Because of, uh, the, the macroeconomic conditions. And while that's true, we can also see here because of the, of the rigor in this test that. That that particular form of outreach did have an impact and that's an important learning. Next slide, please. So in addition to our, the, the programs that we just talked about that are ongoing assistance programs. There were also one time, uh, opportunities for assistance associated with the pandemic. Um, those included funding through the coronavirus relief fund, which was provided as, as one time assistance. Um, and was two hundred and forty seven thousand dollars, uh, provided to, uh, ratepayers. In addition, a hundred thousand dollars from Energy Outreach Colorado was distributed by the R Center as part of their, uh, the, uh, crisis assistance. And there's an additional fifty five thousand dollar allocation from Energy Outreach Colorado that will also be distributed through that mechanism. And finally, Platte River Power Authority, uh, provided a payment of two hundred and sixty five thousand dollars that will also be used, uh, toward these needs. Next slide. So finally, I actually have the wrong name here, very focused on recovery, but the name of this legislation is the American Rescue Plan Act. There are two components of that plan that are focused on utility assistance, including a utility ratepayer assistance program that as a utility, we can apply to participate in. As well as the homeowner assistance fund that is also eligible for use on utility payments, recognizing that important relationship between utilities and housing stability. So those are some things where the guidance from Treasury on how to access those funds is has recently come out for for the homeowner assistance fund, but we'll be continuing to monitor how best we access those funds and help folks reach them. So then I'll turn it over to Jim on the next slide here. Oh, just kidding, not, it's not Jim yet.
Not yet.
That's still me. So in addition to the assistance provided to residents, there's also been no direct utility assistance for for local businesses. But utility payments are eligible expenses for both federal programs such as PPP loans, as well as the local boost Longmont business grants that were provided to local businesses. And that program provided one point three million dollars across ninety-seven local businesses. So next slide. And then finally, we talked a little bit about, you know, our residential rates compared to others in the region. And this is just also bringing in, you know, specifically for electric rates, what our rates look like compared to others within our region. So again, proud to provide high quality, reliable service at a good rate. Now I'll toss it to Jim, thank you.
Thank you, Becky, next slide, thank you. So I'm Jim Gold, Chief Financial Officer. Talk to you briefly about our past due accounts. So COVID certainly has had an impact on our past due balances. You may recall that when COVID hit, we stopped doing utility disconnects, which is really the hammer in our collection process. Under the governor's orders, we were and still are unable to charge late fees or disconnect charge. We are able to disconnect utilities now, but since we typically do not do so when the weather reaches a certain low temperature. We have not yet recommended a return to the disconnects. So this graph that you're looking at here shows you the amount of utility receivables that are greater than thirty-seven days past due. Thirty-seven is an account that could be subject to disconnect under the code. So since COVID began, that amount has grown from about seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars to now about two point oh seven million. So we're billing about a hundred and twenty-five million dollars per year, or at least last year, we were probably doing more, a greater amount this year. For all of our services that appear on our utility bill. So the data in the council comm that you have for tonight indicates there's over sixteen hundred residential. And another over one hundred commercial accounts with balances that that are more than a hundred and eighty days past due. So many other utilities have started to resume service disconnects for bad debt. And their staff is recommending that Longmont do the same. It'll take about a month to notify customers of this change in our practice and to get our contractor ramped up to begin to perform disconnects. And further, this is going to result in a large increase in contacts between our customers and our utility billing staff. So it's going to take quite some time to address all of these delinquent accounts. Our intent would be to work with customers with past due balances to avoid disconnection by providing payment options. Including payment plans and referrals for assistance. And if a customer is willing to work with us and make efforts to reduce their balances of amount due or past due, then they may be able to avoid having their service disconnected. That would be our goal. So we wanted to let the council know that we would be moving forward in that direction unless you direct otherwise. And that's, well, and actually I skipped, you can go to the next slide. But I just covered all that, so I'll hand it back to Becky.
Great, just a few words about engagement opportunities that we've had with the community over the past year. We had a few very successful webinars through our Sustainable Business Program, as well as our SOL program, which is our Residential Sustainability Program. Each of those programs put together an opportunity, a webinar detailing how customers can read and interpret their utility bills. Which were great, we had excellent participation and got really good questions from participants in that. So I would urge folks who may have questions about that to view those recordings that are available on our website or YouTube channel. And certainly, you know, we'll have a lot of communication upcoming surrounding the twenty twenty-one review of utility rates. And can be available to join meetings as requested. We had a great time joining in public meetings as part of our run up to the bond election in in November. So last slide, please. So as I mentioned, this is sort of providing some context for the review of utility rates in twenty twenty-one. Rates that we'll be reviewing this year include the electric rates, which were set on a two-year schedule in twenty nineteen and now require an update. As well as our storm drainage rate and potentially wastewater as well. So this is a general schedule where we'll be looking to bring preliminary information in May, to talk about capital plans in June. Look at some, you know, proposed rate changes in August and hopefully adopt ordinances along with budget ordinances in October. So next slide, that's all we have for you this evening.
All right, cut the screen back. I'm just going to go ahead and say on behalf of council, thank you very much for that information. I'm actually in the mood that we accept the report as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, not seeing any further discussion or debate on the matter, all in favor, sorry, Councilmember Christensen.
I think this is a great report. But I would like to point out some things, this is actually exactly what is extremely painful about being on city council. Because this affects every single person who lives here. I am really proud of the fact that Longmont produces, has its own municipal services. We do a wonderful job, we have, it is much more efficient, much less expensive. We give people help. Nevertheless, the reality is that everything that we do in our society depends upon constant growth. And which, I mean, this actually has something to do with the greenhouse gas thing that many people were confronting. The reality is that we may have cheaper rates than many people. We have efficiency, we have all kinds of things, but the reality is for people who can't afford this, they can't afford it, you know? And it's getting more alarming, I think, for people on fixed incomes every single year. I'll give you an example. I pay about two hundred dollars a month, which is about what the average bill is. That is twenty percent of my seven hundred and twenty dollars take home pay for city council, twenty percent. I have an eight hundred and fifty square foot house. I also pay another seventy-five dollars for Excel. Once you are, from the time you're fifty years old in this society, you're told you need to retire. Which means you're harassed for the next dozen years or so until you finally do retire. Then after you retire, you have no salary. So you're on a fixed income and every year that these rates go up, people are more and more panicked. Because they don't know how they're going to make it the next year. Our property rate, our property taxes go up. Everything goes up instead of figuring out a way that, and of course, we have to do this, we have to charge more because we have to replace things, we have to maintain things. Right now, we're trying to transition to a more sustainable way of getting the energy to heat our homes and to provide refrigeration and to use all our little electronic devices. But I'm just saying, the amount of help we give people is about thirty-two dollars a month on a two hundred dollar bill. That doesn't equate, that doesn't help people to feel any better. The people that are really being impacted by this are people on fixed incomes and people who are younger, who don't have any income much at all, students and younger people. And we just have to keep them in mind. When we start cutting things off, I don't think we should be cutting anything off for at least another month. Because look at the sun, look at the, what happened last night? It's really cold. I understand that we are millions of dollars in a hole now. We have to figure out a way that is more equitable for people so that people are not panicking about how they can at least pay their utility bills, how they can pay their property taxes, how they can just stay in their homes. And so I think this is an excellent report. I hope people have studied this who are at home and understand why we have to raise things and why we have to do things the way we're doing. But I would implore you not to start cutting people off for at least another month until the weather warms up. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, all right. Okay, Dr. Waters?
If we have questions about the report, is this the time to ask them or?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
On the Becky, on the, is it the SOL, S O L L? Service, I'm trying, I'm looking at my notes here. Yeah. The customer said on the SOL program. What can you tell us about level of use, about customer satisfaction, about response rates on that as one of the, one of the programs that's providing assistance?
So the SOL program is a residential sustainability program. And it's a new program, it was in a pilot phase in twenty twenty. So also impacted by the pandemic because it's a program where community volunteers go to homes and, you know, provide fixture swaps or recommendations on how to further environmental sustainability, such as, you know, tips on composting and things like that. So that's a relatively new program, we have limited data about participation and uptake from that.
So I'm assuming it's not a pilot program because if it was a pilot program, we'd collect the data.
You're right. Coming into a larger implementation within twenty twenty-one.
So we have no data, we don't know.
We may, but we would have to come back with that separately.
All right, I guess the related question, and maybe it's related to this, because this is where we're headed, we're headed to seeing a set of recommendations, we ought to start asking the question now and probably answer it several times between now and the time we make a decision in August. What are the consequences, we know the consequences of raising rates, they're all the things we just heard from Councilmember Christensen. What are the consequences of not raising rates? I know we'll get into more detail on this as we go forward, but we ought to start the narrative now. You know, what's at stake? And what are the options as we move forward to rate increases?
I can, Mayor Bagley and Councilmember Waters. First of all, I want to, I want to say I absolutely agree with Councilmember Christensen. We should do everything we can to minimize rate increases. And I, and I think we have done that over the years. I, I know we have always attempted to do that. But to answer your question, Councilmember Waters, for instance, in the stormwater utility. We have been talking with the council over, say, the past year about the economic and financial situation in that particular utility. It has really, at this point, reached the stage where we are unable to maintain the system, even in its current state of operation. It is, it has really reached the stage where if we do not increase the rates or adjust the rates. We will see a deterioration of the viability and the safety of the stormwater utility and the systems that it is charged to maintain. And it, like the water utility and like the wastewater utility are incredibly capital intensive. Meaning that they, they wear out quickly because of the harsh environment that they're operating in. And so to answer the question, it's primarily going to be driven towards maintaining the assets of the city. In this case, of the stormwater utility. It'll be similar, the wastewater utility, and I think we're still trying to analyze whether we do or don't need to adjust those rates in twenty-one, which is why Becky was a little vague on whether the wastewater utility will come forward. And then lastly, on electric. Again, council, you approved only a two-year rate adjustment in twenty nineteen. And we did that deliberately, I believe, because we knew we were in a time of change. And that we were in a time that it wouldn't be prudent to necessarily do a five-year adjustment, which is what you typically do in the utilities. And so I think in electric, we're going to be talking with you about the changes that are happening, primarily with the deployment of the AMI project. That is going to provide the electric utility and the staff with that additional data and information to set the rates more closely to the demands that individual customers are placing on the system. And so I'm looking forward to that discussion with you over the next several months. And you're right, Councilman Waters, we will be talking about this a lot between now and the time that we are even presenting to you any potential adjustments of the rates. If we cannot answer all of your questions, then we need to keep working on it until we do. I hope that answers them for now, though.
Well, just let me just follow up, if I may, Mayor Bagley. Could you be more specific, Dale, in what's the worst case scenario? You've described our wastewater system as marginal right now, or as fragile, or I don't want to, I don't want to put words in your mouth. But, but in great need of maintenance, of upgrade, is that? What's the worst case scenario? If we fail our obligation on that part of our infrastructure and that system, what should Longmonters anticipate? What's the worst case you would anticipate?
Thank you for that. What I would say to that is that we know we have many piped systems around the city that were built over the last fifty years. Many of them, by the way, not built with the best of materials. It's corrugated metal pipe, it's different materials that are failing. And then most importantly, or equally important, is that the city is also under the regulatory compliance with regards to our stormwater quality. And that too is a very expensive proposition. And what I mean by that is that we are charged and responsible to maintain the quality of the water that is running off of the city streets and parking lots and into the streams, the natural streams. And so I think you, I think you run the risk of environment. I think you run the risk of failure of systems, which then result in the flooding of private property when those systems fail. And and it would be a shame because we know we can identify what the problems are. We now need to just be able to identify the best way to go about financing that. And as you know, with RSVP, with the Resilient Saint Paul Project, we have brought tens of millions of dollars into the community. We're going to continue to do that. It's not as easy, though, to bring federal It's not as easy, though, to bring federal dollars to maintain basic assets. However, we do have the potential with the infrastructure bill. Um, and I can assure you, we will be going aggressively after those dollars as well.
Thank you. Thanks, Dale.
Uh, if I can add a couple of things, uh, Mayor and Council, I think. Some, you know, I always go simple answer integrity of the system. Um, but as 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 we look at this, the the other things that come into play. Um, and you've heard us talk about this before, we're actually just now entering into what I call the replacement cycle. And so Dale and I have talked about this a lot. As we have grown as a community, we were a small community and we grew in 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 sections. Well, we're now at that fifty-year cycle of the seventies and eighties. We're hitting that replacement cycle. And that's a different piece for our community because. Other communities that are larger and older have been in the replacement cycle in their infrastructure. You know, really in the eighties and the nineties, starting their replacement cycle. And so that is something, as we talk about our wastewater system or stormwater system. It's not only improving, it's it's really looking at what we need to replace. That is aged out. And so that's another thing that's starting to come into our our conversations as well. And then like everyone else, we're also cognizant of the cost impacts on this. But we're also pressured by many of those same things. And so when we talk about cost of materials to come in and do this, and we see. The cost of wood, the cost of metal, the cost of concrete, and all of those things that are accelerating for everyone else, fuel cost. We're having to absorb those same costs as well as we're moving into this process. Um, and it was interesting to give you a sense. I was on a call today. Um, about affordable housing project, but it's not unlike what we're talking here. Just the increase in materials are causing some of those pro- program projects to bust. Their estimates because the cost of goods have gone up so high. And so we still have to absorb that. And and then you have the other pressures on our staffing costs. So it is multiple factors coming in, even in capital intense areas.
Mayor Beck, if I could just make one more observation, then I promise I'm finished.
All right.
Uh, last, last week, when we were talking about annexations and in and the. The uh, concept plans that went with them, I asked about thirty-year. Uh, economic or financial impact analyses. You just made the case for fifty-year. Financial impact analyses because of, because of what we're experiencing right now. Right? In fifty years from now, somebody's going to be in the same conversation. Based on decisions we make now about annexations and project approvals. So. I'm going to say again, when when we get into looking at actual approval of those annexations. Uh, that's going to be a big priority for me to see what the fifty-year cost of extending our infrastructure and the maintenance of it. Um, you know, especially that to the edges of the community. So I'll be quiet.
All right, we're going to go with Councilmember Beck. And then Councilmember David Ferin, did you have a comment too?
Um, no, my question was already answered.
All right, perfect. Councilmember Beck.
Thank you. Uh, part of my question was answered by Dale, but I have something easy. In the uh, council communication, when you showed the uh, graph or um, yeah. Of where our, what constitutes our utility bill. You had trash in there with a ninety-six uh, gallon receptacle. Why don't we have compost in there? And why don't we have the difference in the two trash receptacles?
That's a.
I'm just curious.
That's a great, Mayor Bagley, Councilmember Peck, that that's a great question. Um, and uh, the 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 reason is that we were, we were trying to come at, you know, sort of the 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 median bill, right? And um, the fact is that while we believe that many members of our community could downsize their trash to be less expensive forty-eight gallon. Um, service that seventy or seventy to seventy-five percent of folks are still using the ninety-six gallon trash cart. Um, so that that that's what we reflected in that typical bill. Um, clearly, we think that, you know, it would be to advantage to to. Change sizes and and subscribe to composting. We are also not quite at a twenty-five percent uh, subscription rate on.
If I could add to Becky's comments, I, I agree with you, Councilmember Peck. Um, I had the very same question.
Oh, you did?
So you're brilliant. So thank you for that.
Okay, my other comment is thank you, Dale, for bringing up of federal funding for some of these projects. I'm wondering because when the, when our, the public voted to increase taxes, a lot of it was for the infrastructure, which I totally agree with. So if and when we do get some infrastructure money from the feds. I would like to know how much, how much infrastructure. That paid for that was included in our vote. For example, if we do get money to offset what we thought the tax money would have to do. Then we will never reduce rates. That that is just not historically done. But perhaps we won't have to increase them again. So I would like, when we do that, I would like to have uh, that information, that data of what we paid for that we thought. Taxes would have to pay for.
We we should be able to account for that.
Great, thank you.
Councilor Christensen, do you have another comment?
Uh, yeah, but Councilwoman Martin had one first.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Martin. I didn't see. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, Mayor Bagley, uh, and thank you, uh, Councilmember Christensen. Uh, I just have a a quick addendum to Councilmember Peck's uh, comments, which is. Uh, we did have someone on engaged Longmont for sustainability in the Climate Action Task Force. Uh, comment that we should be charging more for trash. And uh, we did update that site with uh, an explanation that by reducing their landfill. Container size and frequency of collection, that they could actually get composting and still pay a lower rate than they did before. So uh, we are, we are already promoting that change and encouraging people to um. Spend less on landfills.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Councilwoman Martin.
That's exactly right. We've been trying to encourage them for. Since since I brought the composting thing forward because that's exactly what I did. I I didn't think I could go to a. Forty-five gallon container, but we hardly ever have that filled now that I have the compost and. It's the same or less than I was paying before, but that's, it depends on people's families. I I wanted to thank uh, Councilwoman Waters for what he said about um. The fifty-year timeline. The reason we do have such a well-run town with uh, unified municipal utilities is because. Our forefathers, and they were almost all forefathers, um, did think about.
Paul, you're muted. You just, you just got, you went on mute two seconds ago.
Uh, okay, well, two seconds doesn't matter. Um, anyway, the uh. It was because our, you know, the our um, predecessors. Did think in terms of fifty and a hundred years. And when it comes to infrastructure, we absolutely have to do that. We cannot fail on that. We have known for a while that are, we have needed, we need uh, new uh, wastewater. Um, and water treatment uh, plants and that's something you can't put off. Um, previous councils have put it off to make themselves look good, like they're not raising the rates. But of course, now. We have to raise rates because it, you can't put it off. We cannot fail on this. And. This is actually an opportune time, um, because of the infrastructure. Um, bill that we hope will pass, um, we have the opportunity to actually fix some of these things. Because we've been around since eighteen eighty, we actually have some pipes going around town uh, that are. Really left over from nineteen hundred. I know that when it was a smaller town, people would. Everybody would link up on one line, which is maybe okay. Around nineteen hundred, but it isn't really anymore because if one person gets a block up, then. Everybody's house has a problem. So there are so many things that we really do have to replace. And we, we just. We must fix them, but it is very painful. I mean, you know. Um, but we can't fail on that. That's one of the basic things that this, that government provides this city is services, and we can't fail on that.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to accept the report. All in favor, say aye.
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 opposed, say nay. All right, the motion carries unanimously. The report is approved. Thank you. Um, let's move on to the electric vehicle public charging station review, please.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me? Let me adjust my light a little. Okay, good evening, everyone. Mayor Bagley, councilmembers, thanks for having me present to you today. Um, my name is Tim Ellis. I'm the Renewable Energy Strategy Manager in the Energy Strategies and Solutions Group at LPC. Um, as you know, electric vehicles and charging stations are going to play an increasingly important role in the city's overall transportation plans. Um, they're part of the Sustainability Plan Strategy to reduce harmful emissions. Uh, they're included in the Climate Action Plan to reduce greenhouse gases. Um, they're also embedded in several points along the transportation roadmap timeline. Um, so tonight I'm going to present a summary of the twenty twenty metrics for our five city-owned public EV stations. We look back at twenty twenty for, at our own current, on our currently owned stations in order to take a data-driven approach for EV infrastructure planning into the future. Uh, the first, first part of this planning effort was to calculate a fee to resume charging for the service at our stations that will allow us to implement. A self-sustaining EV charging station program going forward. Next slide, please.
Tim, I don't think your slides.
Oh, there they are. Okay, now we're on the second one, so we didn't miss that much with the first one. So. Uh, there are several EV station mapping apps and websites available to the public to locate stations and give some information about them. Uh, this map is from EVlocalstations.com. Um, and it just, you know, shows the geographical distribution of EV stations in our area, and and it shows that within. Uh, ten miles of the center of Longmont, there are about seventy uh, public cha- charging stations. Next slide, please. Uh, this next map is from Atlas Policies Evaluate Colorado, Evaluate CO. Uh, which was funded by the Colorado Energy Office, and it shows EV station locations throughout the city as well as our own stations. Uh, our stations are located in proximity to our, to some city facilities such as the Memorial Building in the north, the the DSC parking lot. The library garage, uh, the museum, and the LPC Service Center. Uh, these locations allow the public to charge their EVs while accessing city facilities. Our stations are all Level Two chargers, which accounts for over ninety percent of the stations installed in our area. And also, like many of the other local stations installed in and around Longmont, uh, these stations are made by ChargePoint. Uh, which is one of the leading EV station manufacturers in the nation. Um, four of our stations were replaced in twenty nineteen, and the fifth station was installed at the library last year. We replaced the stations to provide a more reliable service to our customers. Uh, that had a very easy setup process and more comprehensive uh, services such as station location app and availability of charging point uh, ports. Uh, setting uh, appointments at the, at the ports if if they're taking uh, things like that that could benefit our customers and their charging uh, needs. Uh, ChargePoint also has a pretty sophisticated data cloud system that helps us track many different metrics for analysis, and I'm going to go through some of those uh, metrics later in the presentation. Um, prior to station replacement, Longmont had a one dollar per hour fee in place, which was temporarily put on hold. Uh, following the replacements, so customers can get familiar with the new enhanced technology of ChargePoint chargers. And to reinvigorate, invigorate the station use and charging activity. And also talk about this and that, the analysis that we did uh, later in the presentation. So we own five of seventy stations in and around Longmont, uh, but the number of private market installations is continuously growing. Um, one question this raises is what role should the city play in the future of public EV stations? Uh, currently only one to two percent of cars um, are EVs, and Colorado is at a really early stage in the rollout of vehicles. As well as the infrastructure to support them. Uh, the private market appears to be ramping up, not only in the manufacturing of EVs, but also the installation of stations. And as a city, we're also moving to replace our fleet vehicles with EVs as the technology progresses to meet our needs. And I'll talk a little bit about uh, more about the city's strategic planning efforts uh, toward the end of the presentation. Next slide, please. So quickly going back to the analysis of our stations. This chart shows the total kilowatt hours for all five stations in twenty twenty. There were over forty-three thousand kilowatt hours used to charge electric vehicles last year. You can see that there was a distinct drop-off in April, uh, obviously due to COVID onset, uh, but station usage, usage has, has mostly recovered from that point. Next slide, please. So as measured by ChargePoint, there were a total of seventeen point seven metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent uh, saved by having. Uh, electric charge, uh, electric vehicles charged at our stations. Uh, this is calculated using, they calculated it using a a general countrywide uh, emissions per average car and. An average electric, uh, electric generation fuel mix. Next slide, please. So these graphics show how twenty twenty, how twenty twenty average car powered, um, gas-powered car compares to an electric car. Uh, Navy customer can expect to get over ninety extra miles when comparing costs and mileage per gallon, per one gallon of gas. Also, for the same comparative, same car comparison, um, the consumer can expect to save over a thousand dollars a year if they drive over uh, twelve thousand miles. Um. So, I mean, the bottom line is that it's much cheaper to operate and drive an electric vehicle versus a gas-powered car. Next slide, please. The chart on the left of this slide shows how many individual sessions there were in twenty twenty at our stations. A session is defined as each time a car plugs in for a charge. The total sessions for all five stations in twenty twenty was about thirty-eight hundred. We also found that the average length of charging time is about three to four hours. Uh, the pie chart on the right, pie chart on the right shows the breakdown of how many unique drivers accessed each station. Uh, it's important to note here that the library station came online in late September, so it has a much lower unique driver amount, and it's likely to increase this year. Um, we calculated unique users for all five stations throughout the year, and it was uh, three hundred and forty-two. So three hundred and forty-two different people. Uh, charged at our stations in twenty twenty. Uh, when we compare this to the number of sessions, uh, see that the users charge multiple times and some at multiple locations. And quickly touching on the strategic planning here, one of the things we're looking at is the opportunity to encourage staff to switch to electric vehicles along the lines of an eco-pass type of program, for example. Um, this is one approach that employers and businesses are using to shift employees over to EVs as part of their larger sustainability efforts. So another strategy we're exploring is is their way to integrate efforts to move city fleet and staff forward along with the public transition to EVs. Next slide, please. Here's a table of the metrics um, for each station in twenty twenty that we we took a hard look at. Uh, available hours are the total available hours for each station throughout the year. Uh, for example, the service center was operational for the entire year, uh, which is eight thousand seven hundred and sixty hours, but it also has two ports available. So we doubled the eight, eighty-seven sixty. Which equals the the seventeen thousand five twenty hours available. Uh, the museum was offline for a short time for repairs, so it had a little less available time. And the library has a lot, much lower available time last year because it came operational in September. Um, charging time is the number of hours that vehicles are actually charging at the stations, while the time at station. Is the total amount, the total amount of hours that cars were plugged into the station. The time at station is the number of hours, but this is the number we're going to use uh, to charge customers. So there will be a motivation for customers. To move their vehicles once they're done charging, and once their cars are, are, the charging is complete. The next column is the percent of time that vehicles were charging um, versus the available hours. Uh, you can see that the DSC parking lot station and. The Memorial Building Station had a pretty high uh, percentage rate, and and it is actually very high considering that. The the available time is twenty-four hours a day, so sixteen percent, twenty percent is a pretty high usage rate. Uh, the next column shows how long cars were were charging versus plugged in at the station. And this number, number gives us an indication if customers keep plugged into the station past the time when they're actively charging. Um, and you can see the number, the percentages are pretty high here, so customers are tending to move their cars when they're done charging. Next slide, please. And here are the results of our, our service fee analysis. Uh, this list of metrics includes the cost of electricity, purchase installation of the station, maintenance contracts. And station administration. And we also consider this is substantial grant we received from the state through the the RAC program. And we also consider this is substantial grant we received from the state through the the RAC program, Regional Air Quality Council, um, uh, grants that are given out that we apply to uh, this rate as well for this fee. Uh, the calculation showed that in order to create a sustainable program that covers the purchase installation and operating costs, we would need to charge about a dollar an hour. Um, so it aligns with our previous cost of charging in Longmont as well as the prices charged by surrounding cities such as Boulder and Loveland and Fort Collins. And if we could quickly go back to the previous slide, um, that you can see that if the fee with the fee is in place, we look down at the time at station number and we'll we would would get a a revenue coming back um, for a year of about twelve thousand dollars. Um, so as you can see at the bottom of that column, that eleven thousand eight fifty-four is what we would get in the dollar per hour fee. And go back to the other slide, please. Uh, this is enough, um, um, money back to purchase two or three stations. If we take the um, reap, the grant money in into account, or we can potentially reuse the these funds on this revenue coming in to um, build additional infrastructure to support future stations. One example of what other um, stations charge in Longmont, or not one, I, there's several. Um, EV Connect has a few stations out of private business. Uh, they have free charging overnight, but they charge five dollars an hour during normal business hours and and this is likely due because it's a a business, they want to discourage public charging during the day so that their customers and and employees can charge. Uh, there's also a station at Walgreens on Main Street that charges two dollars per hour. Uh, there are several stations at car dealerships, um, that for their own electric vehicles and station and some stations at large retail parking lots to encourage shopping. And there are also private businesses that don't allow public uh, charging at all. So, so there are a variety of fee and operating options available depending on the owner and their reason to install the station. Uh, and the numbers of publicly available stations though are increasing steadily. Next slide, please. This slide shows a big picture of Colorado's twenty twenty EV plan goal for electric vehicles over the next ten years. Um, the the zero Z, the Zev Lines Zero Emission Vehicles line, which is um, over seven hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, to put that into context, there are currently one point eight million cars registered in Colorado plus about three million trucks, so there are close to six million vehicles altogether in Colorado, so. So this is a a pretty significant number trying to reach almost a million if they reach their upper high goal. Um, there are also a couple of interesting statements on the slide. The US Department of Energy states that over eighty percent of EV charging is done at home. Also, RMI, formerly known as Rocky Mountain Institute, uh, says that if all light-duty vehicles are replaced with EVs, we'll increase the electric load by twenty-five percent. So, so who went towards EVs is substantial, not only to reduce emissions, but on the impacts to the grid itself. I think this slide shows how important it is for the city not only to focus available resources to support the future of EVs and maintaining reliability and built and building resilience in our electric grid, but but we really need to keep in mind how and where people will be charging their vehicles, how the private market forces will impact this to the transition towards EVs or with EVs, and the need to create equitable EV solutions. Next slide, please. This final slide shows our protect our um, proposed next steps. For existing stations, we're going to continue to monitor and analyze operation and usage in order to provide the best uh, services to our customers and also determine um, if there are any future needs for additional stations. We'll also perform community outreach and education about resuming the station service fee in May through July. And on August first, we plan on resuming the EV charge, uh, charging fee of one dollar per hour at all city-owned public stations. Um, in regard to the broader city EV strategy, we're looking to focus our resources to monitor, monitor and engage the private EV marketplace in order to gauge how EV infrastructure is being rolled out in the city and to support future increases in EVs in our territory and for our for our residents and businesses. We'll also continue communication with other northern Colorado cities about how how we're preparing for increased EV penetration and we're dedicating resources to meet current EV support, support efforts such as the electrification study, which may call for a home EV charging program or strategy. The distributed energy resource study where we can use the tool to measure applicability and cost effectiveness of EV stations and other infrastructure projects in the future. And we'll evaluate city policy options to assist the transition such as building or development-ready infrastructure requirements during the design and build phases of projects, especially for potentially underserved sectors like multifamily developments. And as always, we will endeavor to build an equitable path to the future EV marketplace. Uh, and finally, we'll report back to council in twenty twenty-two on our station activity and other strategic efforts. Next slide. And that's it. Any questions?
All right, let's go with Councilmember Martin and Councilmember Christiansen.
Sorry, my spacebar is malfunctioning again. Um, uh, I've just a quick question, which is you mentioned uh, three hundred some distinct users of of the city charging station. Uh, this may have been in the transportation report last uh, meeting and I missed it, but uh, do you have an estimate of the total number of EVs that live in Longmont right now?
Um, I did see a number of, um, let's see, I I thought it was close to two, between two and three hundred. Um, upper two hundreds, low three hundreds, um, through that, um, what is that website? The Colorado, the Colorado Energy Office website, it has some numbers all in their page that uh, talk about Longmont specific, although they blend it kind of with Boulder County, so it's kind of hard to get an exact number.
Yeah, I was actually, I I saw that report myself and didn't believe it, so I was hoping you had a better number because it does, it doesn't seem that likely that a lot of people charged in Longmont who didn't live in Longmont, you know, our chargers are not that widely advertised or anything, so I was thinking that the actual number of local EVs must be greater than the actual number of EV local chargers that we had on our public's charging, but you don't have any better data than that.
I don't have the data, although you have to keep in mind also that um, each individual has their own like number or identifier, so two people can be using the same car and they'll show up as two different users, right? So that's where the details get a little fuzzy. But we're going to continue to track that information. You know, the 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 websites are getting revised all the time. There's more and more data out there every few months about uh, the penetration of EVs and expectations in stations, so there's just a a lot of changing and dynamic information that we're going to try to keep.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Thank you, Mayor Bear. Good. Um, I have a question and a some comments. Um, there are apps for people to locate our city and and in fact, all charging stations in the town, aren't there?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's good. I thought, so I don't have one, but you know, I think most people would love to have uh, an electric vehicle and the only thing stopping them is the cost, and I'm hoping that this miraculous infrastructure that we keep pinning so much hopes on will be providing some um, some uh, help to uh, get more people into electric vehicles because that's the only, a subsidy is the only way that most more people will be able to do this. But this is rapidly, it within ten years, there will, there will be a huge market. I don't see any problem in restoring this fee because frankly, you know, most of the people who had currently have electric vehicles can certainly afford a dollar an hour. So it's not a matter of equity. Um, and I, they, I wouldn't mind charging five dollars an hour because it would help us further this program and it would help us further some of the other goals having to do with electric vehicles, but certainly restoring it is a good idea and publicizing that we're going to be doing that and why is is a good idea. So I I thank you for the support. It helps us all understand where they're located and uh, how much it costs and how many people are using this and stuff. I I do find the, I've heard that statistic from the Rocky Mountain Institute that if we electrify everything, it's going to up the rates, I mean, up the amount of electricity we're going to have to provide by twenty-five percent. That's stunning and that really has a lot to do with uh, the the subject we talked about earlier of uh, greenhouse gas emissions and you know, it all goes together, but um, so I thank you for uh, giving us this report. I think it was very good. Thank you.
Thank you. And I keep in mind the the number that the RMI stated was for light duty only. That even, I didn't even recognize the uptake of trucks, so it's going to be much more than that in the in the long term.
I move, I I move that we accept the report on electric vehicle public charging station review.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. It all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Oppose, say nay. All right, the report is accepted unanimously. All right, Sandy, you here?
Absolutely.
Okay. How many, how many uh?
Here are the members of council.
Okay, how many we got on the agenda tonight?
Three bills tonight.
All right, let's talk.
All right, sounds good. Thanks, Mayor Bagley, Members of Council, Sandy Seder, Assistant City Manager. We have three bills uh, for your consideration tonight. The first one is House Bill twelve sixty-six concerning efforts to redress the effects of environmental injustice on disproportionately impacted communities. Uh, this bill creates the Environmental Justice Task Force within uh, CDPHE responsible for creating justice recommendations, environmental justice recommendations to the General Assembly. So this is a bill that really does further our uh, climate action goals and our equity goals and so staff recommends that City Council supports House Bill twenty-one twelve sixty-six.
Okay, Councilmember Peck?
I move support of House Bill twelve sixty-six.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, the that support passes unanimously. Next bill.
Thanks, Mayor Bagley. The next one, which you've heard a little bit about from our public invited to be heard, Senate Bill twenty-one two hundred concerning measures to further environmental protections and then connection there with adopting measures to reduce emissions for greenhouse gases and adopting protections. Um, this bill is interesting because even though obviously the the thought process around reducing greenhouse gas emissions is really important to the city council, it's really important to the staff and to the community and, you know, to our health in the future. The way that this bill goes about it is very interesting. First of all, it requires the PUC to actually um, be the responsible party for municipal utilities. This is, this is kind of the a juxtaposition of not how it works uh, in current legislation. The PUC currently does not regulate municipal utilities because A, Platte River Power Authority has a board and B, Longmont Power and Communication has a board, which is you guys, City Council. And so the PUC generally does not regulate municipal utilities. And so for that reasons, uh, Cal, uh, Colorado Municipal League is opposing this bill. Um, in addition to just the fact that it's not the right way to go about it legislatively, there are also some issues with the bill around some inconsistencies. Number one, you heard the cost changes, right? Our staff says that this is going to uh, cost a whole lot of money based on some of the basic cost propositions that were in the bill. And others are saying, no, it really should be small because there's a cap in yet another piece of legislation that requires um, uh, us to have those hot, those, those costs capped. What's tough is that then you're relying on one piece of legislation to be capped by another piece of legislation. It really should be much more explicit in the bill, uh, if that's the way that it's going to go. But in the meantime, it's really not guaranteed. It's very ambiguous, ambiguous at this point, so that's part of it. Councilmember Martin, sorry, Mayor, Councilmember Martin has a question.
I I I thought you were done. I was just waiting, raising my hand to make a motion, Sandy, thank you.
Councilmember Martin, make a motion.
Uh, yes, uh, for the reasons that Assistant City Manager Seder uh, outlined and for many others, since I spent most of the day trying to resolve the different uh, agencies' recommendations on this bill, uh, and I agree that the ambiguities are very dangerous. I move something different than the staff recommendation. Uh, I move that we oppose this bill until amended. That gives us our loudest voice in terms of lobbying to have it fixed. Um, and uh, it gives us an opportunity to turn on a dime and begin to support it once the problems with it are resolved.
Second. All right, Councilmember Christiansen?
I'm Martin about this, but I would rather, we never get the uh, option to approve if amended. That's not one of our options and I would rather do that because I mostly do approve of this. But I do find, as staff has said, you know, I I think all of us on this council agree that we want to see greenhouse gas reduced. We want to see pollution reduced. We want all of this stuff in here. However, it it is really difficult if the um, if we're going to have an immediate uh, fine of carbon emissions, that will be uh, truly uh, costly. And uh, we're still in the process of working through our uh, our own um, dealings with Platte River Power Authority, which I think um, are pretty positive. But the other thing is, I do have a problem with the PUC um, micromanaging us. That said, we do need to address this on a statewide basis. This is, this is the problem of of statewide versus countywide versus city municipal. We we are really doing a lot of good work uh, in this city to address these issues. I don't want PUC to interfere with that by us having to um, I I have no objection to us filing reports. I think every city in this cit-state should file a report and tell the PUC what their plan is. But to have the PUC then uh, say, start ordering us around, that creates a problem with um, our ability as as a council and as a municipality to form our own um, plans that we've already done with uh, Platte River Power Authority. So I would, I would much rather um, have us approve it, but uh, Councilwoman Martin is right, that isn't really a um, an option. I I'm also having trouble trying to understand why we're doing this because uh, Colorado Municipal League already discussed this on Friday and voted on this. And they voted to oppose unless amended. So what is it that we as a council are doing here? Are we going to send a letter to the state legislators about this, or what are we going to do about this? Because it's already been voted on by the Colorado Municipal League. So I I'm having trouble understanding why we're discussing it right now.
All right, so so right now, I mean, that's, that's fine. We can keep talking. I mean, I want to, right now, there's a motion on the table and the motion is simply to oppose until amended. That that that's it. And so uh, whatever the process is, we usually follow. Um, we 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 usually just take a, take a stance, so um, Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. I am going to take a stance. I want to uh, address the cost of this because I found it um, Assistant Manager Seder, you sent out an email uh, later today explaining some of the the fees and that is what I wanted to address. You mentioned that there was another piece of legislation uh, out there and that is uh, the January two thousand nineteen revised statute twenty-five seven one fourteen point seven, section C two. These fees are already capped. So I was a little disappointed with with the uh, information in today's emails that PRPA is actually having regulated pollution of three million tons a year. That's a lot of pollution. But this uh, statute revised says, and I quote, "In no event shall an owner or operator of a major source pay more than a fee based upon total amount, total annual emissions of four thousand tons of each regulated pollutant per source." So that means, I think, three million tons a year of our regulated pollutants by PRPA is completely unacceptable. Um, but it means of that three million tons, only four thousand tons of that would require a fee and the fee has been set at thirty-six dollars a ton for twenty-one twenty-two. So for me, this piece of leg- legislation two hundred is an oversight bill, which I So for me, this piece of legislation 200 is an oversight bill, which I am very happy to have. Um, what PRPA would actually be charged, if my calculations are correct, is that they would be uh, paying 144,000 for rawhide uh, CO2 and about 56,000 for Craig's 1 and 2, which comes to approximately $200,000 annually, not 96 million. So those, I, I am surprised actually that we looked at $96 million as a fee and, and accepted that from PRPA. No one's gonna charge them $96 million. Um, I'm sorry, I'm very passionate about this, so I don't mean to scold anyone, but uh, but we need this oversight because even though council is the board and they are producing 3 million tons of pollutants, how are we gonna know that? How are we gonna regulate it? How are we gonna stop them? We need oversight, and that's what this bill does, as far as I'm concerned. And in the bill, it never, it never, what it is stating is exactly what this statute states. It's the same costs, et cetera. And they will raise the fees to whatever this statute would raise it to. That is the one that they have to follow. So um, I, I would, I will not vote for the amended, for the motion, because I think we should pass this. So, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Martin?
Yeah, I just want to point out that while, while that statute so far applies to NOCs and SOCs and other things like that, um, that uh, we do not necessarily know that uh, uh, it's ambiguous whether that would apply uh, to carbon emissions because there, there are overlapping regulations of carbon emissions already. So I think that it's an assumption what you're gonna get either way. I don't think that PRPA is going to have a 50% increase in rates. But I also don't think we can make assumptions about how it is going to work. And I would rather um, bring our efforts to bear to make sure that some of, some of the, frankly, some of the sloppiness in this bill uh, gets cleaned up before we, we support it. Um, I think there is also a problem uh, with some of our friends in the mountains because of similar ambiguities about hydro power that could really end up socking them in the budget. Um, just as, as an exaggerated carbon fee of any sort uh, could disrupt our plans with PRPA because we have them following a mandate. They are spending money they wouldn't spend if they weren't trying, not as effectively as I like, but trying to follow that mandate. Um, and so again, I, I think that what we need to do is give ourselves, the individual council members who have a voice, and the staff who are experienced lobbyists, um, the opportunity to support C M L and also use our own voice and get this bill fixed up. I hope it passes too, but I don't hope it puts us under the um, P U C.
I was gonna have council member, or I was gonna have Mayor Protem talk, but, but do you have a brief comment?
I do.
Go ahead then, Joan, just to finish the, finish the conversation.
So the revised statute does include carbon emissions.
Okay. Council, uh, Mayor Protem Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I think as, as been uh, expressed tonight, both in public invited to be heard as well as comments amongst the council, uh, the spirit of this piece of legislation is good. The letter is flawed, if you will. And um, I, I would prefer not to make some sort of nuance, and I'll vote against either approval with nuance or opposition with nuance. Instead, uh, the only thing I would be inclined to vote for tonight is monitoring. Um, and generally speaking, usually uh, in these cases, council either approves, opposes, or monitors. Um, I don't think putting some sort of nuance on it is necessarily worthwhile, is, in my opinion, on either side of the, the question. So I, I just would like to explain that when it comes time to vote, people will understand why I voted the way I did. So, thank you.
I'm with Mayor Protem. I like, I like your intent, Councilmember Martin, but I'm gonna vote against it because basically what you're saying is let's monitor it. Cause we're gonna, we will approve it if, later, if they amend it. But the uh, let's go ahead and vote. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring?
Thank you, Mayor. So I do have a question. Why, um, because while the city supports the spirit of the bill, but there were still concerns with the actual language, why did you choose not to, or why did you not recommend to monitor?
Councilmember Martin?
I, I had a question. Thank you. The reason is monitoring.
All the time, wait.
I asked, I asked um, Assistant City Managers.
I thought you were, I, I thought you were asking Councilmember Martin why she didn't make a motion.
I was not.
That's all right, I apologize. That's why, that's why, that's why, that's why I jumped in. So Councilmember Martin, hold on. Uh, Council, uh, Sandy, do you want to go ahead and answer that?
Absolutely. Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, uh, Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring. Generally, we just bring these kinds of bills with a staff recommendation one way or another. We don't often get into those nuances that you all are talking about because it is a policy decision from your perspective. Certainly, I would say that there's a couple ways you can do it. You can oppose it unless amended, or you can support it if amended to take out municipal utilities, for example. I think the crux of it is that we want to make sure that you retain the rights to run your electric utility the way you see fit and meeting your goals. And that's really the point and why we oppose it.
All right, so, so we've, most of us have had, go ahead, Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring?
So um, you know, I just, because I served as legislative liaison for our union, our teachers' union. And oftentimes when we came across a bill that, you know, that we had some concerns around the language, rather than just flat out opposing it, we still wanted to keep the language going. So oftentimes, we would give, you know, support pending, and then we would provide our recommendations to keep, because really, I don't want to just set as, as a flat out, yes, I support this, or no, I oppose this, because then it closes the door to further discussion. Um, because I think we're, we're satisfied or we're not satisfied with however the language is. So I really do want to keep, and I do intend to, to reach out to um, our legislators about, legislators about this bill and, and looking, and considering it's, it's just introduced. There, I imagine that there will be amendments, there will be revising. But um, you know, I'm inclined to either lean towards monitor or um, support with these um, recommendations. So, thank you. That, that's all I had to say. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, so let's go ahead and take a vote. Um, the motion is to oppose until amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Nay?
Nay.
All right, the motion fails uh, five to two with Councilmember Martin and Councilmember Waters uh, four. Um, Mayor Protem Rodriguez, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I'll try this one real quick. I, I, and I guess I'll give it a little nuance, considering I was speaking against nuance, uh, in the sense that I move to monitor the bill with recommendations.
I'll second. All right, uh, all, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, oppose, say nay?
Well, I would have asked a question, and I couldn't, so I'll, no.
No, no, let's go back, let's, so let's go back. I didn't see any hands, so go ahead, Dr. Waters?
Uh, could, just an explanation of monitoring the bill with recommendations. Uh, uh, help me understand. I'm not smart enough to understand what that means, I guess.
Mayor Protem, do you want to go ahead and clarify your motion?
Um, so my assumption is that we were talking about either approving it uh, if amended or opposing it until amended. Uh, I assume the amendments would probably be consistent with uh, most of the concerns that staff brought up, outside of maybe a few, and um, I don't think I could, through just a general consensus, specify said amendments uh, at this time. But if it's more palatable to folks to monitor and then suss out what recommendations, whether we, we completely agree with city staff's uh, concerns with the piece of legislation, or we have our own concerns, that we were able to specify that. But the first motion is just generally uh, monitor with recommendations. Outside of that, I think we would have to have further conversation to specify recommendations.
Well, I, sorry, Dr. Waters, go ahead.
Uh, I, I think, I think the motion to monitor makes sense. Uh, I, I, the, the, with recommendation still leaves me wondering what, what the heck recommendations we're talking about. And, and there's not an answer to that, so I'm not certain what to do with.
Councilmember Martin?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor Bagley. Um, I still believe that it would have been stronger to oppose pending amendments, which is what the Colorado Municipal League did. And that was why I phrased my motion the way we did. But because this council seems to be uh, reluctant to take such a strong view, I'll support the Mayor Protem's recommendations and assume that uh, this, and we can talk about it later if we have to, but I would say that a yay vote would mean that we trust the staff to put forward the recommendations of the staff and the Colorado Municipal League. So, you know, if that takes a friendly amendment to make that part of it, will you accept it, Mayor Protem?
And I'll accept the second. Councilmember Beck?
Thank you, uh, and I expect uh, the staff, staff will come back with those amendments, or at least ask for input from council on what they want those amendments to be through emails uh, before you bring us back that draft.
Sandy?
Mayor, would it be, uh, and Councilmember Peck, would it be amenable if we leave the cost issues out of any conversation back with our legislature? Cause what happens, to answer Polly's question, uh, Councilmember Christensen's question, is that after you take these positions, I share all of these with our local legislators, I'll share this one as well. And if you, if you all vote that you'd like to monitor it, I'm happy to put that position in and say, here are the concerns that we have. And I'm happy to remove the cost concern since there's disagreement on what that looks like. Um, if that would be uh, uh, helpful to kind of help put some borders around it.
That would be helpful, and I, I think also, well, I can, I can tell you in an email, yes, because those costs are not correct, um, by any means. So, thank you.
Happy to admit it and, and just really stick with the home rule municipality issues.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so the motion on the floor, uh, Mayor Protem Rodriguez?
I just wanted to thank Assistant City Manager Seder, because I think both giving us an idea of what the process is on how after these votes, what you do with that information was very helpful, as well as uh, you know, uh, I guess confirming that while there's not consensus on City Council about exactly what information, I think, I think you're, you're spot on with what you would uh, intend to share with our, our local legislators i- in that case. And so thank you very much for that explanation. I appreciate that.
Okay, so the motion is to monitor with recommendations, and those recommendations, of course, will come, the staff comes back and talks to, talks to us to check on what those recommendations should be. All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay? All right, the uh, the motion passes unanimously. All right, let's go on to mayor and council comments.
All right, Mayor, I have one more. I apologize.
Go ahead.
I have sent a bill 238, and this is the passenger rail district. Um, and so this is uh, this is the bill that would create the district for the purpose of planning, designing, developing, financing, constructing, operating, and maintaining a passenger rail system um, along the front range. So this is one that we had the staff supports and, and suggests the city council support, mostly because of the theory around it, right, that um, that it's, that what we're trying to do is, is create the district in the first place, understanding that taxation and representation and all those things would have to follow.
Okay, Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I would like to make a motion, but if you wouldn't mind, I would like to explain my motion first, so that
That's fine.
I might get a second. Okay, um, whoops, somebody. Can we remove the uh, legislative, the, the voting thing off of the, I'm trying to look at primed up, and all I see is the voting screen, and I can't see my notes. Can you take that down? Who's, who would do that? Thank you. So my, my point of this bill is that it's premature. Uh, we have to wait to see if Amtrak even gets into federal funding before deciding on a rail district. Without funding, there's not gonna be any rail, period. Um, right now, there are three RTD fast tracks corridors vying to be the alignment for front range passing derail. And if they do not pick the Northwest Corridor to be that alignment, um, I don't think we should be part of the district. We're already part of uh, the Southwest Chief, the Southwest Chief has a district, and RTD has a district. Uh, per Claire Levy, any municipality in this brand new district, district, once it is uh, once it's created, can go to court to get what they want out of it for the rail. For example, if a city within the district wants something special, they can go to court and ask for that. I'm totally against this because it's exactly what we did with our fast tracks with RTD. The southern part of the district got more and more of what they wanted because they wanted special things. They used up all the money, and we don't have our Northwest Corridor. So I think that's very subtle in this bill, and I think it's wrong. Um, so the, and plus the 0.8, 0.08% tax, I don't even think we should mention that because we don't have a district, we don't have the funding yet from the federal government, from any enterprise. So that is why I am gonna make this uh, motion. Uh, I'm gonna move to ask the authors of SB 238 to suspend the bill until we know the funding and sources for the rail.
Second. I just, uh, I, I, the only thing worse than paying for a train that we never got was paying for two trains that we never get. So, I, until, until, until we see uh, what the plan is, that it's gonna include Northwest Rail, and see what portion of the tax that we're gonna pay. We already pay one, one, one cent of, 1% of every dollar spent in Longmont goes to RTD and uh, and, and the rail and fast track, and I, I just, increasing that to almost 2% just seems silly. So um, I'd like to see it. So, Councilmember Peck, I'm gonna actually support you on this. So, all, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Sorry, Dr. Waters?
Um, I'm not as familiar with the, the text of this legislation as obviously Councilmember Peck is. Would help me to get a little more information about uh, the geography of the district. Is it already defined?
Can I answer that, Mayor Bagley? Okay, yes, it is prematurely defined, Councilman Waters. However, um, until we get the funding, until Amtrak gets any federal funding for this, we don't know what that funding is gonna cover. We also don't know if we create a district in order to cover the operations, what would that tax be dependent upon the funding from the federal government? Um, so it's all up in the air at this point.
So.
Go ahead.
So it becomes a little bit of a chicken and an egg. How do we get some of those questions answered without the legislation? I, I mean, I, I, I hear the concerns, both yours and the mayor's. I, I share those concerns. I was asked earlier today about this bill, and I said, well, there's a, there's a bunch of questions I have uh, about the geography of the district, who's at the table to make decisions, how decisions are gonna get made, when they're gonna get made, what do we know about funding, you know, all those things. But I don't know how you answer those if, without legislation. So what do we, i- what, i- if this, let's assume this bill dies, um, is there, is there some other way to get those questions answered about the geography of a district, decision makers, um, what, what equity looks like for municipalities like Longmont? It, all, and all the other issues you're talking about. How do we get to those?
So, uh, Councilman Waters, uh, there is a map of the district, and I can get that to you. Uh, FRPR, FRPR, yeah. Especially in their uh, in their presentation to us a few months ago, did show a district, I mean, I'm sorry, the geography, the plan for the rail uh, per uh, Front Range Passenger Rail, who would, who would partner with Amtrak. So that geography of where the rail's gonna go is already out there. The geography of the district is also out there, and I can get that to you.
That'd be helpful, yeah.
Yeah. So, the, the uh, plan for the rail, if it doesn't have the Northwest Corridor in it, it does not help Longmont at all. Um, but there are, like I said, there are three other fast track corridors that are vying for that alignment. I question whether whoever does not get that alignment will vote for the district. Because we're all trying to get our local fast tracks corridors and it's dependent upon federal funding at this point. So um, that's why I made the motion.
All right, all right, so is there anybody opposed to the motion? All right, so let's, if you don't mind, let's go, then let's go ahead and vote. All in favor of opposing, uh, do you want to repeat exactly what the motion is? Councilwoman Peck.
I would like them to suspend this, it's premature, just take it off the table. Don't oppose it, don't, just take it off the table. And I, I don't know if that's an option, but I don't want to agree with it, I don't want to oppose it.
Right.
It's premature.
All right, so all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, the motion carries unanimously. All right, let's move on to council, uh, Councilwoman Christensen.
Uh, Councilwoman Peck, would you please send uh, that information to all of us so we all know the districts and things like that?
Of course, thank you for that, for that.
All right, let's go on to mayor and council comments. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say tonight? All right, great, Harold, anything?
No comments, Mayor, Council.
Eugene? He who lurks in silence?
No comments, Mayor.
Great, all right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, all right, it's been moved by Councilwoman Martin, seconded by uh, Dr. Waters. Uh, Councilwoman Christensen, you were in there somewhere, I saw, so, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, we're, we're, we are, we are adjourned. And I just want to tell everybody, thank you for a quick meeting, I, but I'm not feeling well after the vaccination, so that was, that was a great night, thank you.